Everyone to our meeting of April 18th. Would everyone please stand for the salute of the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. May I have a motion for the consent agenda?
Mrs. Pavel, could I pull items four B and four E for discussion?
May I have a motion to that effect, please?
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
What numbers again, Ms. Farworth?
Two B and two E.
Thank you.
Four B?
Two.
Two.
Oh, you know what? It's four.
Four B?
Sorry. Sorry, it is four.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we approve the remaining agenda without those items.
Second.
All in favor?
So on item four B, the minutes from February 18th. Item... Under new business four E, to award PD to Novak. I agree with how it's worded. I would like to see it amended, indicate that those funds are coming from Title II grant funds as opposed to our operating budget, if that's okay? And then, under the next item F, item four F was tabled. If you could change the word till to until. And then for item four E, minutes of March 27th, there was no attendance listed. And I think that's a part of the minutes that has to be there. I'll also just note that we had four in attendance for open session and three in attendance for executive session. Mrs. Pavel had to leave at the end of open session. And those were the only changes I had.
Motion to approve as amended?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Motion, I mean, vote?
All in favor.
All in favor. Thank you. Next item will be new business, number seven, new business, recognize Rhode Island History Day contest winners. Dr. Sankeoni?
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. And what a way to start our agenda tonight, recognizing two distinct groups of students, not only the history winners but our All-State band members. To tell you a little bit about the history winners, I'd like to call up the middle school principal, Andy Zatoli.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. Dr. Sankeoni, members of the school committee. Again, I couldn't emphasize more, this is just really great news. Not surprising, we have an extremely group of passionate teachers, including Ms. Christine Costa, who I'd like to call up to describe to you. But a couple of weeks ago, our students were involved in the National History Day competition at Tollgate, and I'd like her to tell you about that and how well our students did. So thank you.
Good evening. For the last, is it sun? Okay. For the last four years, students at sixth grade at Tiverton Middle School have participated in National History Day. This is a project-based learning program in which students research a historical event, craft a historical argument, and then create one of five different methods to present their findings. They can create a research paper, a documentary, build an exhibit, a website, or give a live performance. After holding History Day at the middle school, 12 of our students advanced to the state competition. At the state competition, three of our groups earned awards. I'd like to tell you a little bit about those awards and have each winner or winners come up to talk about their projects as I introduce each one. The first winner was the recipient of an award called the Secretary of State Award. This award was granted to one student out of all projects entered in the entire state competition. The student had to use primary sources from the Rhode Island Archives the best. And the most outstanding project that used those archive sources was Zachary Snysik from sixth grade.
Hi, I'm Zach Snysik. And I used, my project was about Nathaniel Greene and how he helped and impacted the war throughout the revolution. And the reward was where I used a list of primary sources to make my project.
Awesome. Well done, Zach. Nice job.
Our students might be a little shy tonight, but trust me, on National History Day at the state competition, they were interviewed by various judges. And the judges are history teachers, historians, state park rangers, and members of the Rhode Island and local historical societies. So they were extremely impressed with our students. The next two groups that I'll introduce to you were first-place winners in the state for their category. Now, we've been doing this for four years. So in four years to have two different teachers and two different groups come in first for the state to go and compete, at nationals next, that's their next step. That's an amazing feat. So the first group that I'm going to introduce to you is a group of sixth-grade boys who created their own documentary. And those students are Ben Brigham, Sam Messenger, and William Correa.
Hello. We did John Adams and the Boston Massacre Trial, and our thesis was John Adams crossed a political frontier by setting the standard for what the American court system would be like. During the Boston Massacre Trials, he set a legal guidelines by sequestering the jury, creating the standard of reasonable doubt, and having the courts accept a dying declaration.
Anything else that you want to ask?
It was pretty interesting going to the state level. At first, we didn't really know if we're going to get an award, but we ended up getting first place. It was pretty cool to see all the other documentaries that the kids made. And it was pretty cool that we got first place.
Very cool. Very cool.
And our other group first-place winner was created by two sixth-grade girls who made an exhibit. And this is a larger than life-size exhibit. It's actually six feet tall when it's standing. And that was created by Abby Gilfillan and Elena Sylvia. Elena can't be here tonight, but Abby's going to talk about a project.
Hi, I'm Abby. Working throughout the National History Day contest was an amazing experience, meeting everyone who competed, getting to see others' projects. It was extraordinary. My project and Elena's were about Abigail Adams and her independence, how much independence she had fighting for women's rights and equality. And throughout going to state levels, it started out pretty small. There was a lot of doubt in our minds about a lot of reprinting and a lot of major setbacks that happened to us, which kind of made us doubtful about our project. But going on into the contest, seeing how others were creating history and giving examples of how history affected them, kind of just pushed us a little bit harder. Meeting everyone who competed and all the teachers and judges, they were amazing. They were so kind and gentle. During the judging, I was worried at first, but going up and seeing their warm faces and talking to them kind of eased me into it. And a lot of, me and Elena, we were very anxious. We didn't realize how extraordinary our project was. We were more focused on how extraordinary others were and not seeing the amazingness in our project. So getting to be awarded first place is an amazing accomplishment for us. Thank you.
I just also want to recognize Christian Georgie. I know she's watching tonight. She and I worked hand-in-hand with our students, and our sixth graders have been remarkable. I also want to mention that it was Susan Craven, four years ago, when she was my principal, who recommended we take the Patriot Project to the next level. I know Dr. Sankeoni always says, "Go from good to great." I think we definitely did that. So through their vision, we appreciate that. And also, I want to thank Principals Zatoli and Vice Principal Kellet, who was there on our Patriot Night and fully supported us and always do. And I know they're all rooting for us when we go and compete at the national level this June. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I have one thing I'd like to say. The young lady that just spoke, she shared what she felt at the beginning, that she wasn't, she and her partner weren't going to be good enough, that, you know, were they going to be able to make it? Were they going to be good enough? Were the kids they were competing against, were they going to be better? But once she met them, once she got to know what they were doing, they gained so much confidence that they went from good to better, to best, to great. And that's what you're teaching. That's what our teachers are teaching these kids. You can do it. Just have that confidence in yourself, and you can do, you can do anything. I'm so proud of all of you. I'm so proud of Mrs. Costa and all the teachers that work so hard. Look what you, look how good you are. So thank you, everyone, for putting in all that work. Thank you, Gitz. Okay.
Do they want to say anything?
Anybody else? Diana?
You put it so very well, but I do want to congratulate you all and wish you a great time at the national competition in June this year. Looking forward to hearing back on how that all went. So thanks for coming tonight, too. Appreciate that.
I think I know all these students. Congratulations to all of you. You make us proud. I think you all do other things, musically, artistically, sports, right? And I do want to take what Ms. Pavel said, and that's a pretty good accomplishment, like making the Little League All-Stars last year, right? Getting to that World Series. If you guys put your minds to it, you could do anything, and you just proved it. So congratulations, and go down to Maryland, correct, in June? So thank you to Ms. Georgie, Ms. Costa. Hope you guys bring home a title, right? Be a title?
It would be best in country.
Okay, all right. That's pretty cool. All right. So don't stop there. Bring it all the way home. Let's do this again in July. So congratulations.
Next on the agenda is seven B, recognize high school All-State honors band.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. And yeah, following some great students at the middle school, we have some great students at the high school who perform admirably with their instruments. To tell you a little bit more about that, it's High School Principal, Ms. Susan Craven.
Thank you, Dr. Sankeoni, members of the committee. It's an exciting night here at Tiverton, and it's amazing to see the accomplishments of these students. It reminds us all why we're here, to push them to do their best, and I'm very proud of all of them, middle school students as well, because obviously, I was there and I've seen what you can accomplish, and I'm extremely proud. So a little bit about All-State Ensemble. All-State Ensemble is an audition-based ensemble made up of the top student performers from across the state, managed by the Rhode Island Music Education Association, a state chapter of the National Association for Music Education. Allstate is run each year to give students a chance to showcase their hard work and dedication of their instruments. To be chosen to participate in an All-State Ensemble is to be recognized as one of the top student instrumentalists in the state. So we're here tonight to recognize four students who received Allstate. And I'd also like to introduce Mr. Matt Paquette, who's our band director, and he's going to say a little bit about each student, and we have certificates to present to each students as well. Mr. Paquette?
My name is Matt Paquette. I'm the band director here at Tiverton High School. And yeah, to be considered for Allstate, a student must show dedication, passion, and a drive for music above and beyond the usual expectation. Typically, these students are working as much outside of school as they are inside of school with private instructors and more devotion to their instruments than their peers. After being considered, students begin working on music for their audition. This music is assigned and selected by the Rhode Island Music Education Association to challenge them. Sorry, excuse me. Many times, the music required is of a difficulty more often seen at a collegiate level than a high school level. Students are expected to put in the time and focus to perform these selections to the best of their ability. In addition, students are asked to perform rigorous scales, which are the building blocks and foundations of music, as well as sight reading, which is the ability to look at a piece of music once and be able to play it. It is then that they will be competing with all of the other selected students. They are adjudicated by a panel of judges, and if they are chosen, they get to join and perform with one of the numerous Allstate Ensembles. Not every student is chosen, and in some cases, very few will be selected, depending on the instrumentation and the requirement of the ensemble's performance. Today, we have four students who competed and were selected to perform with four of these ensembles. Three with our senior Allstate Ensembles for grades 10 to 12, and one with junior Allstate Ensemble for grades nine to, seven to nine. To start, I'd like to notice Senior Jonathan DeGala, who performed with the senior Allstate Orchestra on violin. Violin is probably one of the most competitive instruments in the orchestra. Due to the fact that it makes up two sections of an orchestra, one needs to be an exceptional player to be accepted into the Allstate Orchestra. And John is just that. In class, John is a leader among his section as well as the orchestra as a whole. Beyond class, he is constantly challenging himself to play difficult solo pieces and strengthen his technique.
Jonathan?
Congratulations. Well done. When you get into high school, we make you laugh.
Congratulations.
Next, I'd like to recognize Senior Robert Campion, senior Allstate mixed chorus as a bass vocalist. Rob is very conscientious of his posture and breathing, both of which help him to produce a powerful bass sound. He has a good ear and memory for the notes of a song, which helped him to be the leader in class. Rob is also constantly singing outside of the chorus class, performing in musicals with the jazz band, with the jazz band, and as well for his senior project. Rob Campion.
Congratulations. Very welcome.
Nice job. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Next. Next is freshman Nora Winslow, junior Allstate Orchestra on trumpet. The only non-senior to be selected this year. Nora's a talented musician and multi-instrumentalist, who also plays the viola with our high school orchestra. Just in her first year in high school, it is evident that Nora has the passion and tenacity to be a leader, and is successful in senior Allstate as she has been in junior Allstate. A dedicated musician, she is a member of our jazz band, pep band, marching band, orchestra, and in our concert band class. Nora Winslow. Thank you, Nora. And finally, she is not present this evening, but Senior Jacqueline Delcourt, senior Allstate Band on French horn. Jackie is a quiet student with a powerful sound, and in class, she is a solo instrumentalist holding her own in a section that, when in larger bands, is a section of four. She has also chosen to play what many consider the hardest of the brass instruments, requiring strong lungs, an accurate ear, and a strong dedication to the instrument to be successful. The selection of these students is a direct result of their hard work and dedication to their craft, and just the amount of effort and time they put into their instruments is beyond what any regular student in band or chorus or orchestra puts forward. So I thank them all, and I'd like to recognize Sarah Cundy as well, the chorus director here. We are both super proud of everything you guys have done, and it's great to see the success happening.
Mrs. Powell?
I have a, everybody, you know, I'm just so impressed with everyone. I'm so impressed with the, how hard our kids work, the dedication. I, too, am very familiar with this, so I'm going to, I'm going to call it out, because I had a student who was four years in middle, four years in high school, four years in college, and was very dedicated to his instrument. And I understand how difficult Allstate is, how challenging Allstate is, and congratulations to all of you, because it really, it really is a terrific accomplishment.
Thank you, Mrs. Powell. We'll move on to seven...
I was just going to dovetail and embarrass my team, too.
We're banned here.
Yeah, we're the banned parents here. Yeah, the Allstate program is really a wonderful one. It's, you know, it, once the kids get involved with it, they want to do it every year if they can. And I encourage that, and I know our ninth grader, I don't, I think, did she leave?
I think she shot. Yeah, I think she had to scoot.
I said, four more years, or three more. She's eighth grader or ninth?
Ninth.
Ninth, yeah, okay, three more years. But, you know, it really is a great endeavor. It's a great opportunity, and tell you what, it makes your parents oh so proud. So congratulations to you all.
So as much as I love sports, I love music. I played trumpet. I also played sports, but congratulations to all of you. I know it's a lot of work. I did it. My oldest son plays guitar, and he puts a lot of time into it. So to make Allstate is a huge accomplishment, so you should all be very proud, and just know that we're very proud of you as well. Nice job.
No? Move on to seven C, first reading of policies. Dr. Sankeoni?
Going to turn this right back to Ms. Farworth, who's going to take the lead on that.
You guys, you can go if you want.
You're welcome to stay.
Welcome to stay while we go through the...
Bye, everyone.
Good night. Thank you for coming.
Now you, Dave. You have to stay.
Okay, so on your agenda this evening, we have, in two, three, four, five, six...
Seven.
Six policies.
Seven, six.
Five, six.
Seventy-six.
Six.
Seventy-six.
Okay. So just to give you a little bit of background, because Dr. Larkin's not with us this evening, but he and I, who comprise the policy subcommittee, we have met on a couple of occasions. And in this case, our focus was on the safety policies, the school committee's safety policies. So the, just to give you a little background, we had reviewed every, every policy within the chapter, Chapter 11, I will call it, the 1100 series, and pulled out anything that was related to safety. And I think the first decision that we've made is to actually take all of the safety-related policies and give them their own chapter. So for each of the policies you see here this evening, they're being renumbered to a new policy number within the 1300 series, so that they can stand alone. Next, I will also remind you that the district has an emergency response plan that contains more of the specifics around the procedures and actions to be taken during security events themselves. The policy subcommittee is reviewing this as well, and at some point in the very near future, the school committee will review and approve an executive session, as much of the information contained has a limited audience, obviously, for security purposes. So that will be coming at a future meeting. And then lastly, one of, and this you'll see within the first read of these policies, is that one of our goals, as we update our policies in general, is to remove procedural steps as they go, that those procedures are beyond the scope of our authority. It's our, our role to set policy, not necessarily to set the procedures. So you'll see that in several of the policies that we review this evening, that wherever procedures were discussed, we've actually recommended deletion of the procedures. So if you'll bear with me, I will take us quickly through the six policies that we are amending. First of all, safety in school, formerly Policy 1110, the new number will be 1301. You'll notice that anything that we have added is noted in red in this policy and all of the policies. So in this case, we've made a statement with regard to the principals being responsible for the safety drills, and that the, again, mention about the district's emergency response plan. We speak in Policy 1302 to weapons and violence in school. We have added a policy statement at the beginning to state that it is the policy of Tiverton Public Schools that weapons of any kind are not allowed on school property except for those belonging to and carried by law enforcement. Again, any, we have struck a number of pieces of language, and those strikeouts are indicated in the first read draft that you have with you this evening. Couple of minor rewording items as well that we put in, into that particular policy. Does anyone have questions thus far?
No.
Okay. So for Policy 1112, we are, that speaks to the, a memorandum of understanding that actually didn't exist, so we are recommending deletion of those pages of that policy. And that's through page six. And then we continue on with the weapons and violence in schools policy. We speak to assaults and the, the policy statements around assault. Again, we are deleting procedures, administrative procedures, for the violations of assault that is handled within the emergency response plan. Again, the rest of this, we are deleting the uniform weapon seizure report, because again, it's procedural in nature and handled in other places. That takes us to the end of newly numbered Policy 1302. We now have Policy 1303. It is a bomb threat policy. And I'll ask, actually, Dr. Sankeoni, if you could have the title put on to the policy draft before the second reading? We have made a statement of intent, and I will read that to you as it is new. Tiverton Public Schools believes that the safety and well-being of our pupils and staff is of paramount importance. Thus, in our emergency response manual, we have, and I do see a spelling error there, the word "manual," we have outlined detailed procedures surrounding a bomb threat. This policy includes the responsibilities and duties for individual staff members. In the event that a threat is received, the procedures in this policy will come into effect. In all instances, the police will be contacted immediately, and their instructions will be followed at all times. The likelihood of a threat being made against a school is extremely remote. However, it is essential that any threat is taken seriously and acted upon in a professional manner. Determination to evacuate and/or allow reentry shall be made jointly by the senior on-site officers from the fire department, police department, and/or school administration. Any difference of opinion shall be resolved by decision of the principal upon consultation with the superintendent of schools. And then the second bullet, decisions to evacuate entire areas will be conveyed to the school bus company by the principal. All of the remaining pages on the previous version of this policy are being deleted. That was a rather long one. So...
You deleted a lot of pages there.
Yep. Policy 1304, newly numbered Policy 1304, formerly Policy 1164, school search and seizure. Didn't have as many updates there. There are some strikeouts in some of the words, and certainly in any mention of procedures. Those paragraphs are struck. And then lastly, the procedures will be updated on the district website as needed. Policy 1305, school security and visitor policy. The visitor policy component is being added to the school's security, just to make it very clear what it's addressing. We have a number of bullets there. Some are struck. We did have, we did add one bullet within the description there. Should there be a need for an early dismissal, parents requested to provide the principal with prior notice. Any person picking up a student early must be identified on the emergency information submitted by the parent, and upon arrival must show identification/picture identification. If the name is not on the emergency card or no picture ID is shown, the child will not be released. The student being dismissed will meet the person picking them up in the vestibule at the school. And then finally, Policy 1306 speaks to video surveillance on school department property. There is a statement with regard to camera placement and operation, and the fact that video surveillance equipment shall not monitor or record sound, and that is per Rhode Island general law, and those laws are quoted within the policy. The use of recordings is addressed here, and we have added some language that the viewing of the video recording collected as a result of surveillance will be limited to the superintendent, his or her designee, and/or the principal or assistant principal at the school in which the surveillance was obtained, or by law enforcement officials, following the MOU sign between the school department and the police department. And then we did change from the verbiage in unauthorized recordings. All unauthorized video recording on school department property is expressly prohibited. This includes the use of cell phones. Violators may be reported to law enforcement at the discretion of the superintendent of schools and/or designee. So those are the six policies that we placed for first read. I'll entertain any questions, and hearing nothing, we will schedule this for second read at our next regular meeting.
So how, are these posted? Where are these posted on the website?
They are.
Just if people know where. So if you go on to the school website, are they in the school committee section?
Yes.
Are they, okay.
Under Documents, go to School Committee, and then there's a, there's a School Committee Policies tab.
I just, I mean...
And the first read...
Yeah, because these are really important policies, so, I mean, this would be a really good opportunity for our parents, our students, our student reps, to, you know, really, you know, go through these. These are the safety policies, and I know there's been a lot of discussion about it, so I hope people, you know, take the opportunity to go find them on the website and look at them. And while we do have a second read, and we usually approve it the second read, if anyone has any questions, if they have any comments, you know, we certainly can extend it beyond that. I just really wanna make sure the parents...
Well, the third read, we will approve them.
Right, but that's why I wanna make sure that the parents understand that, you know, you know, really, or students, take an opportunity to read these.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And if there are no questions, turn it back over.
We'll move to 7D, Council 94, contract approval, but we will go back to that after executive session. That'll be 7D and 7E, both under the same thing. So old business, review current capital projects, discussion, possible vote. Dr. Sanchiyoni?
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. I wanted to just update the committee on where we are with capital projects. I'm hopeful that at some point, we'll actually be able to make a decision on this in the near future, money is allocated to the committee, but wanna bring you up to speed on where we are. So currently, we have one approved project with RIDE, and that is the locker room project here at the high school. That project is scheduled for 45% reimbursement. However, that reimbursement is only good until December of 2023, meaning construction has to start before that date to qualify for the reimbursement. The reason I bring up the date of December 23rd is that the legislation that has to revote or reprioritize reimbursements, and speaking to Mario Carino, who's been a great help to us, who's the leader of SBA in Rhode Island, he's not sure that these same reimbursements are going to be available moving forward. We have already invested over $100,000, excuse me, close to $100,000 in this project between the first architectural firm and the second architectural firm. We'll continue to work on this. Brewster Thornton is continuing with the engineering, the prep work, and, you know, moving at a slow pace, but understanding that, you know, we're still looking for funding to keep this project alive. And in essence, what I'm trying to paint a picture for you is that this truly is the only project that could be completed in the summer of '23. If there's any type of pivot, if you wanna change your priorities or things like that, that is certainly your prerogative. However, anything that we need to pivot toward would need to be submitted into a new stage two, which we're working on, which will be submitted in September, wouldn't have approval until December, and really couldn't have the work completed until the summer of '24. And so the reason I'm bringing this up to you is we contemplate all these things, and there's so many things on the capital plan that need work. We wanna capitalize on reimbursements. We certainly wanna make sure things are submitted to RIDE for their consideration for improvement. But as I'm looking at it now, as we continue the discussion, I guess I wanted to bring out the fact that this one project, there's a lot of money been put into that project right now. It meets a desperate need here at the high school, both for the aesthetics and the cleanliness of the locker rooms and the bathrooms, which are deplorable, but also for safety and security, that side of the building that faces the tennis courts, probably our weakest side, and part of this project is replacing the doors and the alarm systems and all the things that go with that. So it does have a sense of security that goes along with it. So I just want you to keep this on your radar. I want you to keep thinking about it, because as soon as we're allocated money, you're gonna need to make a final decision on where you wanna go with this.
I have a question, based on this letter you gave us.
Yeah.
Do you have any idea why we're not getting what we thought we were going to be getting from the town council?
So the town council hasn't made a decision yet, and that's why, I know we're gonna be with them on Saturday...
I'm concerned about that, because I thought that money was gonna be coming...
Yeah, so the last time we spoke to them, there was, there seemed to be a verbal commitment of the estimated amount for this project, and also the reimbursement for the projects that are currently in work, and the combination of those funds would be able to fund this project, at least at its current estimated cost. So I guess that's why I'm saying this to you, is that if the town council allocates that money, obviously, you make the final decision on, you know, what direction we wanna go in. Hopefully, that's gonna happen maybe Saturday or soon.
Go ahead, Diane.
I'm trying to remember where I heard this, but did I not hear that the town council was expecting to perhaps take that up at their meeting a week from now?
Like now, yes.
Next week?
That's what I, that's what I'm expecting.
And I certainly haven't seen an agenda or had any communications, but I thought I had heard that perhaps during one of their discussions, during one of their meetings, and so, you know...
So it might be a week from yesterday?
Like yesterday, yeah.
Yeah, next Monday.
Okay, good to know.
But I don't know that for sure.
Yeah, we haven't been informed.
But I can, I can almost swear, I remember hearing it during one of their meetings, that they were gonna look to do that, that last Monday in April.
I haven't seen it in writing.
And I'm playing catch-up. What's Saturday?
A budget presentation to town council.
Okay.
So next Monday.
Has, so no one from, as far as we know, I mean, I know the chair's not here, but as far as we know, no one from the school department has been invited to Monday's meeting, if in fact they are going to have it? Well, obviously not, because none of us knew about it.
And it's not a certainty either.
That they might not be able to do it that night?
I haven't spoken with anyone specifically about it, but I can almost remember in one of their recently, recent meetings that it was mentioned.
So then, I guess the question I have is, do we wanna send some sort of, if it's not gonna be on that agenda, we need to discuss it. We need to know so that we can move forward. So if it's not gonna be on that agenda, I guess we need to put an agenda request in so that we can get some direction, because we do need, to your point, we need to make some decisions, and we need to know what kind of funding we're getting to make those decisions.
And thank you for mentioning that, because for Brewster Thornton to execute this this summer, I mean, they're doing the legwork at a slow pace, and they're not signing contracts with any contractors, but they're saying, "We might need you." Again, the summer's a couple months away. This project's supposed to start in June.
Right, and I mean, the school department, just so people understand, the school, we do not have the funds to do this. So this was dependent upon the casino funding that the council had at least, to your point, verbally committed for this project. So we just need to get either confirmation of that commitment, or confirmation that that commitment no longer exists...
Exactly.
So that, so that we can make some decisions. So if, in fact, it's not on the upcoming agenda, I think we need to ask to have something put on an upcoming agenda, either through, who's our liaison, Diane, or, you know...
Or Dr. Larkin.
Or the chair, yeah. Just, it's just because, like, to your point, we need some certainty either way.
And Brewster Thornton continues to work on this project, and, you know, that is accruing cost, even though we've asked him to slow down. They're working, and again...
Well, and they're working in our direction, because this was our, you know, we approved it.
You signed a contract with them, so...
Exactly, so we just...
You're gonna need to pay them.
But if the funding has disappeared, you know, we need, just need to know that.
Yep.
So we need a resolution, one way or another.
My question would be, I would envision that the safety of the school, with all their concerns, could be a potential issue with this money that we need to finish the locker room project. Would it be understood that whatever the next round of money from casino reimbursement, that would almost all go to the safety? Is that sort of like...
I don't think we've discussed that.
We haven't discussed it, nor has the town council. I think we need to...
No, that's the problem. We don't, we can't assume that.
So is that, well, is that part of what...
Don't assume it.
Okay, so, well, having a crystal ball, would that be something they would or could discuss? They can, right?
Anyone can.
That could come up Monday, as long as I'm saying that's a meeting.
To your point, if you pivot towards safety, that's fine, but you're not gonna get that work done till the summer of '24.
So you're not gonna get the 45% reimbursement?
And you're gonna lose the 45% reimbursement, and it's, you know, I think your thinking is, why wouldn't we do this project? Because there should be another level of funding a year from now.
Correct, that's what I'm...
Unknown, but possibly, and that could then maybe take the safety part, but that's your discretion, your decision-making.
But correct me if I'm wrong, my interpretation of the rules is that you have to have a contract with a contractor by the end of December. It's not that you have to have the construction physically started. You have to have the contract in place. And so there's moving parts, for sure.
So I guess what Diane filled in the back end of my question was, even if that was the thing, okay, we can do that, too. We have till December to get that, so we can get reimbursed on everything.
Right, so I think that's, yeah, Mike, that's a good point. So it's like, if we go forward, and again, you know, it's a conversation with the council, but if we go forward with the locker program, the locker project that we had already approved, get the 45% reimbursement behind it, we can still get a contract in place by December to get, you know, some of the safety things. Yes, Mike, that's your point, I think.
And Dr. Sanchiyoni, do you have a time estimate on when we're going to have the report for the security audit, so we can start talking about the security improvements as well?
So we spoke to them today, and they have a lot of, you know, they're working with a lot of different districts. We should have the report on the high school sometime this week, the other four schools they're working on.
And I'm sure they're not all capital, but that certainly will dovetail with the capitals.
Sure, absolutely. Just wanted to make sure you understood all the parts that are moving.
I know.
I think you're...
That's all right.
Do we have the future meeting dates and topics?
Yeah.
Yeah, mhm. So our future meeting dates, 9A, May 9th. Does anyone have anything they wanna put on that agenda? We do not need to bring back the policies, we know that, for the second read.
Second read. Certainly, budget will be on there.
I do want to add that, and I just literally learned of this within the last two days, the town council will be reviewing the school department's budget this coming Saturday.
This coming Saturday.
Apparently, this was agreed to by our chair some time ago.
I heard that today, too.
I, yeah, unfortunately, I can't make it with this short...
Twenty-second is Saturday, isn't it?
You know, I'll just express my disappointment that, you know, it's coming upon us this suddenly, and I did speak with Dr. Sanchiyoni here. He has indicated that he'll be able to attend on Saturday, which I'm very grateful for.
You're going to be able to attend?
Yes.
Thank you, Amy. Thank you, Peter.
Yeah, thank you both. I don't know if it makes sense for us to post. I don't know if any of my colleagues will be attending.
I'm going to take back drug stay at the police department.
So we won't need to post? Just be you and apparently Jerry.
I'm sure they're not gonna make a decision that night, so...
No, no, and I did speak with the town council president just a couple of hours ago about it, and she did indicate that they do intend to get to the school department's presentation, because they were...
It's last on the agenda, the school department, but that's okay.
It is, but there's a potential it's gonna get moved up, because there's a couple of other, couple pieces in there. So unfortunately, I can't give you more specifics than that.
Thank you for doing that.
I'll be with you there in spirit.
It's nice that she shared that with you, though.
That is this coming Saturday.
So you're gonna give us an update on the 9th of that? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'll probably send you an email update shortly after, too.
If we need to meet at any point in between, then, for a special meeting?
Let us know.
Yeah, just let us know.
Okay, hell, May 23rd will be on, the next meeting after that. Anything that you know of will be on it.
I mean, that's our financial meeting. We'll give you an update on the FY '23 budget, and anything else you wanna add?
Possible executive session. I make a motion to move into executive session under RIGL 42465A2. Negotiation update, Council 94. B RIGL 42465A3. Discussion on the matter, safety and security, MOU, SRO. C RIGL 42465A1. Discussion, confidential assistance, and athletic director contracts.
I'll second it.
Second?
Yes.
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 And I say yes.
An executive.